To the baby. It is now four thirty. Want to take this opportunity to welcome everybody. Stephanie, will you do a roll call for us, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Huff. Commissioner Monte.
I'm here.
Commissioner Orman.
Here.
Commissioner Powell. Commissioner Reddick.
Here.
Commissioner Scott.
Here.
And here's the point, I, do I introduce our new?
Yes.
Is she official?
Yes.
It's.
She say my name?
What, and what is her last name? I'm sorry.
Blackman.
Blackman. Commissioner Blackman, you're gonna be at the head of the class now. You'll be the first one called.
I am here. Happy to have you. Thank you.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. We have a quorum. Next on the agenda is public comments. Ms. Askew, did you have anybody that registered for public comments?
No, sir. We didn't have anyone.
Comments by staff or board members? No? Well, I'd like to make one. First of all, I'd like to thank the staff and commissioners who are all present at the the last board alderman meeting. Though it's kind of challenging for me, first of all, to see Ms. Askew in that chair, you know, it bothered me just the thought of going up that flight. I've been carried before and I know what it felt like for me, but it wasn't up no steps like that. And I just wanted to thank you for enduring that hardness as a good soldier because psychologically, I'm quite sure you went through some thoughts in that. So I just want to thank you for enduring that and for Arlene as well. Both of you just had surgery and how she navigated it. And but I want to thank the staff for surrounding you all and supporting you during that time. And you were never alone during that. So I know you know that, but you had to, y'all had to endure that. And also Ms. Askew, Mr. Norman and Mr. Barney, y'all did a great job in the presentation to the board. Thank you all for that. I know that's what you do, but for the memorandum understanding, but I just want to thank you all for your presentation and particularly Mr. Banner, how he just wrote things down and made it plain for all of us to get some understanding of of what was taking place there. I have to reserve rehearse what took place, but it's great when you got people to know what they're talking about, howling things.
Right, right.
And lastly, when we are having meetings as board members and if we're on Zoom, I just highly encourage you to be visible. So because we're representing people and the people need to see that we're engaged. If we've not here physically, if we're on Zoom, just being on at the camera, let people know that you're locked in, that you're engaged with what's taking place. So I just wanted to put that out here. And I know you're not disengaged, but we want to forsake the appearance that you're not locked in. Because that time that we set aside to meet is important and we're representing people. So they need to see the representation. We're good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any comments?
I'm sorry.
You're fine.
I do as well. I do not, I do not remember the exact date, but I was, I was afforded the opportunity to go on a tour with the redevelopment commission. And we toured a lot of areas in Duffy Field, off of Broad Street. There were areas of which the redevelopment committee has control over. And I just wanted to say as well, Mr. Chairman, to work with them. We have to establish a relationship with them as well as the board of aldermen. I feel like it is absolutely, I don't see how they can get anything done without us.
I agree.
There was a lot of misconception as to who was supposed to be doing what and and a lot of thoughts, especially about Trent Court. And I did, I mean, it wasn't for me to comment, but I listened and there's a lot of misconception. I actually started to call you, but it was on a Saturday. And so I didn't know if you were in town or what your schedule was or anything, because it was pretty last minute for me as well. But I enjoyed it. And I absolutely say we have all got to work together.
I'm glad that you said that. And I was aware, I just couldn't come out conditioned because I can't really do a lot of walking, especially at that time. But I have been in contact with the redevelopment commission. I've also pointed out three pieces of properties that they have that we would like to work with them on and possibly use those properties for development. So I have been in contact with them quite closely.
Just comment on that, just because we're working really hard. It's important. You're absolutely right. It's there's been a lack of leadership from the redevelopment commission with some changes and things like that, but hopefully with hiring an executive director, because the vision has always been that they produce the vision and the big picture. And then you all develop, you know, they're not there to be builders and developers. You all, that's your job to build and develop. As you've done with Carolina Avenue, Habitat has a role in that they can provide housing for people that can own it. So they'll play a role and we all have to be at the table. None of this, y'all won't work. They won't work. Habitat won't work. We've all got to work together. So I will tell you, I'm committed as the alderman for the ward, that I'm committed to working with you all and Tiffany and whoever else to make sure that we make all that happen.
And I appreciate you sharing that. And I think in another meeting I was with you, you did say something about the leadership with them that it had gone through and changed within plus. But thank you for sharing, Chairman, Commissioner, because it's imperative that we come on one accord. We got the same objectives, but it's like you run a plate and everybody running something different. Everybody want to score touchdown, but you're not working together. So it's imperative that we get on the same page. And last comment before we move on, Mr. Commissioner Orman, the last meeting, you were not present, but and I hope it's okay with you and we'll find out here real soon. You were appointed to the development committee because you, since I've been on this board, you have shown such a level of compassion and commitment and caring about the residents, that I thought you would be a great asset to this committee that we put together to go out, to engage in development, to see what properties and things are available. And just doing that extra to help the executive director and as a board, as commissioners, that we can get boots on the ground. And I hope it was okay with you that I appointed you on that. I just, you weren't here. I didn't get an opportunity to talk with you, but you have just shown me that willingness to speak up on different matters and, you know, just keeping it one hundred. You don't care in that moment because you're representing the people. And so I appointed you to this committee and I hope it was fine with you.
Oh, I'm all on board. I appreciate the thought.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any more comments before we we move to the minutes? Take the, you probably looked over them already, but take the opportunity to to look at the minutes and so we can get to take on that or with anyone want to accept them as they were an issue printed, just.
Well, I've looked over them and the biggest things were the collection, resolutions for the collection of losses, vehicle disposition, the MOA with the city. And I move that we approve the minutes as they have been presented.
I'm going to second.
Second.
Any further comments or anything? So all in favor of approving the minutes that they've been sent out? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 Like sign. You know, just interject real, real quick here. I want to thank the city, particularly you, Alderman Binger, how this came about with a MOU. I tell you, what seemed tough when you're not together, when you get together, things can happen. And you would like no disrespect, I tell you, but you like a bulldog on a bone, right? When you play, you'll turn it loose. But that's what you need in this business, you know? And with the expert, such a matter of expert we got with Tiffany, we got a good team. If we just keep pushing this thing together in the right direction, New Bern would never be the same. It would never be the same. And so just thank you all for that. At this time, finance report, Arlene. She's in the building.
I'm sorry, I was on you. Good afternoon. I will be covering the financial report ending February twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, starting with Trent Court. Okay, reading from left to right, the total operating revenue, three hundred forty-two thousand, four hundred twenty-three dollars. New Bern Towers, one hundred sixty thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars. Consolidated total, five hundred, three dollars, ninety dollars. Five hundred, three thousand, ninety dollars. Second page. Total operating expenses for Trent Court, one hundred eighty-four thousand, six hundred forty-four dollars. CHI business activity, nine thousand, forty-eight dollars. New Bern Towers, one hundred forty-one thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars. Consolidated total, three hundred thirty-five thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars. Total revenue and operating expenses, Trent Court, one hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred seventy-nine dollars. CHI business activity and loss of nine thousand, forty-eight dollars. New Bern Towers, nineteen thousand, five hundred thirty-two dollars. Consolidated total, one hundred sixty-seven thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars. Total net income and loss. Income for Trent Court, one hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred seventy-nine dollars. CHI, a loss of nine thousand, forty-eight dollars. New Bern Towers, an income of nineteen thousand, five hundred thirty-two dollars. Consolidated total, an income of one hundred sixty-seven thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars. Okay, any questions, comments, concerns?
Been none. No, any questions, comments?
I move that we accept the finance report has been presented.
I second.
All in favor of the minutes being accepted, the report being, the finance report being accepted as presented? Please somebody saying aye.
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 All opposed, like sign? There being none. The report is accepted, the finance report is accepted. Thank you, Arlene, now for the great executive director's report.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. As you all know, as mentioned earlier, we have the joint resolution with the city sign for the MOA to help us move forward with our FEMA application and to get environmental assessment done for the Trent Court property. And so now we're at the point of getting the the MOU done and we need to bring the historical commissions on as a part of that. And some of the things that we're bringing forth for that is our mitigation efforts for the Trent Court property. The most important things are the bar release there at the buildings and we want to preserve all of those and to utilize those in other areas and also at the property there. Other things that we'd like to do would be to redevelop the Charles Taylor Building for our office and name some of the buildings after individuals in the community. We want to have a statue of the three bar lease. There's only three of the icons, three different versions of it. And we want to, you know, make sure we preserve those things. So we'll be taking that to the historical commissions to get their sign off on that. The MOU for that. And so it's a tireless process working with FEMA. I just drafted a five-page email to them today to try to get them to answer some questions for us so that we can get that application closed. But the team and I are working really hard on that. Mr. Banner, our architect firm, and also Mr. Norman has been on weekly calls just about every week to try to get this taken care of. The next thing that we have, we have a couple of requests for proposals out there for services for the agencies. We're looking for unit terms to help us get our units turned over quickly so that we could have those for rent, because we have quite a few vacancies. But right now we're down to two maintenance staff. One of the maintenance staff had surgery on Friday and so he's going to be out for some time. And so the guys are running and running and running, but I think they're happy with all the work that they have. We also have a RFP out for landscape service, both Trent Court and New Bern Towers to take care of our lawn care. And then we also have a RFP out for auditing services. Our current auditor is they need to be replaced and they have decided that they downsized and they can't continue to go in with the agency. So we're looking for a new audit firm. And then we have been working on updating the lease for Trent Court. And then we also have updated our utility analysis and maintenance charges for that property. And what we'll do is we'll bring that to you for review and then we'll also put it out to our residents for a thirty-day comment and review period. And see Carolina Avenue again as well, doing well. I think I might have mentioned this last month, but they're fully leased. They're the property. We are looking for a Ross service coordinator for the Ross brand that we received to work with our Trent Court families. We had a job fair last week, which was really great. We had a couple of people come by and we have some interviews scheduled this week. I only have one. I'm hoping that if there's more out there or any others that are interested, they'll send their resumes and or they can go to the NC work website and apply. And so we will need to get that position filled as soon as possible so that we can, you know, get started working with our families. And then one other great thing that I'd like to share, our maintenance supervisor, Adrian Jones, has been selected to speak at the Community Fabric Awards. So we are so excited about that. And he's excited and I'm very proud to have him a part of the team and just to have him to be able to have that opportunity. So any of you all are going to be there, please, please, you know, be mindful that he's going to be speaking. And so he represents our agency well.
When is that?
It is twenty
Twenty-fourth or twenty-fourth.
It's a Tuesday usually. I am a gold sponsor. And let's see, two, is it the twenty-sixth?
It's the Tuesday, the twenty-sixth.
And I get a table.
Oh, oh, wow.
So I will throw it out there. I think the tables are eight or ten. I don't know. Eight.
And Warden Smith has a table too, and we normally have some seats. I think it would be wonderful.
I think that would be really good. Such strong support and when you show people appreciation and you come out for things like that, it encourages us as well. We should be proud, you know?
You know, if we can all show up, everybody's gonna show up.
Yeah, yeah. That'd be, that would be absolutely fantastic.
I'm sorry, could you give me that? What is, what time is it?
It's like twelve.
No, wait. It starts, I think you have to be there at eleven or eleven-thirty.
I'll send out more.
Okay, please do.
I have eleven-thirty.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If you can send it out and I can make sure that I'm there.
Okay.
We understand.
Well, I have one more question to Ms. Askew. It probably goes towards you. At some point in time, I think we ought to have one of our meetings out at Carolina Avenue.
A board meeting?
A board meeting, yeah.
Yeah, your community.
I will reach out.
Yeah, it's got a community. Everybody, we've seen the community building.
They were having issues with getting furniture in.
Well, I understand that, but when they're ready.
I will reach out to them.
I think we need to put our stamp on that building, that project, because it's nice.
Is it, are we doing a grand opening yet?
We were waiting because they don't have furniture. So the community building doesn't have all the furniture that it's supposed to have. So they were kind of trying to wait until it was fully furnished.
It'd be good. Okay. Yeah, I remember being there for the groundbreaking. The one a minute that will be happening.
Yeah, get used to it.
Yeah, that's good. Appreciate the love and the support and we keep sharpening one another. Just keep doing what we doing and keep some balance going and ask any tough love questions of one another.
I also want to say I'm sorry that Thomas, Judy and Tucker are not going to be around anymore. They really they were thorough. They really, they took us through some arduous times.
That's all I have to.
I have one question for you, Ms. Askew. When you were talking about lease, Trent Court, you said something about updating the lease. Could you explain that a little bit?
So if I'm not mistaken, the lease that you had currently in place was many, many, many years old. And so it really truly needed to be updated. So we put together a version with the help of Warden Smith to come up with a legal lease with all of all the requirements that we need to have in there. And so right now, we're at the point where we want to put it out for the requirements, that it goes out for a thirty-day commentary period. And so the staff or the residents can make their comments on the leases or the changes that'll be done. And then from that, we'll have a final version.
Okay, good.
I want to, I want to share it with the board too, so that you all can make sure you know what our lease says.
Good.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Go ahead.
And happy to explain it to you. Just in summary, the changes don't change how the interaction between the tenants and the housing authority operate. It simply is an update of the HUD regulations, mostly incorporating policies that the housing authority has to make sure that everybody knows exactly what they're supposed to be doing. When you do see it though, I think, I think you'll be surprised at how complicated it is. And just keep in mind, that's not because that's what New Bern Housing Authority wants. It's just the way the HUD operation goes. It is very complicated for residential lease, but, you know, we'll work with the tenants to explain everything in it and just keep that in mind.
Okay. Yeah, that probably was some, it got old and outdated and nobody wanted to want to deal with it. But I mean, you know, I'm glad you're on top of it. So we I heard you say that. I just wanted some clarity on what that was all about. Appreciate it. You good? You done?
Yes, sir.
Any comments or questions for Ms. Askew at this time? All right. At this time, we have a report from, on the New Bern Towers from Natasha.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The total of units is a hundred and six. Units occupied, ninety-six. Vacant, fifteen.
Again, whole.
Oh, you got a hundred and six, ninety-six occupied, vacant is ten.
It's fifteen.
Then it must be units occupied is ninety. Or ninety-one.
Well, I'd say it's ninety-six.
Yeah. Yeah, Tasha, it's just a typo on your units occupied.
Okay. I do apologize.
Should be ten. Okay.
And you have fifteen vacant.
Yes, fifteen vacant. occupancy rate is eighty-five percent. Move in, one, move out, five. And there was two violations, one abandonment and two deaths. Tenant account receivable charge, twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight cents. Received, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents unpaid, one thousand, forty-two dollars. Tear rate, ninety-six percent. Pending terminations, non-payment, fourteen. Criminals, zero. Other violations, three. Work orders, outstanding request, one. Requests received, four. Completed, three. Pendant, zero. Pinned repairs, zero. Pinned parts, one. Police reports, total calls, eighteen. Fire reports, total calls, zero.
Ms. Simmons, of the fifteen vacant units, how many of those are ready? Ready to be moved into?
We have one that is almost ready. And we do have applicants to move in. But we do have painters to come in. So all of them is again, we're having ready by the next meeting because they already working on.
Of course, you guys run like a machine. So I anticipate you guys, every time I go over there, you guys are working. So I never see you not working. So.
Yeah, we all working. We all working.
One unit's ready, it's already got an applicant and fourteen are in process.
Yes. But let me tell you that we have some of our two bedrooms now. We have, okay, so but we have, I think it's six of them, there's not. And they will be, they would be leased up.
Thanks for that. Appreciate it.
I think Ms. Hardy was in a two-bedroom.
Yes, she was.
I have a question. I've been on this board for eight years. I know what, I know what the number is. What's TAR stand for?
Tenant count receivable.
Okay. I mean, it's, it's a ninety-six percent we've collected. I knew that. I mean, but I just didn't know what TAR stood.
And just to share some things we did at New Bern Towers, we had a St. Patrick's Day party at the Towers. All the residents came out and they were just, they had a really good time and they sung Happy Birthday to me. And so we had a great time on St. Patrick's Day, our St. Patrick's Day party. Then another amazing thing, I wanted to show you pictures, but the pictures won't open on this laptop, but the laundry room has been painted. It has new washers and dryers. And those washers and dryers look so nice. Yeah, I really hate that the pictures won't open, but it looks really good. I'm really impressed. We got to finish cleaning the floor and to put up the blinds, but those machines are nice.
Also, the residents are so happy about their washers and dryers. They are very, very happy about it.
Appreciate the hard work and keep, and to stick to it and this because it's like, I mean, I think since I've been on the board, I've been hearing about washing machines. Am I right, Mr. Or, Commissioner Orman?
For two years, we've been hearing about washing machines. Thank God we got washing machines and dryers.
They are so nice.
It's not, it's not that, it's not that staff wasn't working hard. It was, you know, the timing of everything, trying to fix things. So staff was doing a great job. But yeah, my phone hasn't rang in three weeks. Great job.
Y'all really doing it. Y'all keep, y'all doing that.
I do want to say also that the residents were very happy about Ms. Tiffany wanting to spend her birthday with them. Yes, they was all running around. They enjoyed Ms. Tiffany on her birthday. They really, really did. They sung. Yes, they was all running around, they enjoyed Ms. Tiffany on her birthday, they really, really did, they sung too hard, it was just, yes.
That's good, um, Ms., uh, Ms. Askew, we just appreciate you, uh, continuing that the, uh, residential, they matter.
I know, I was so, I was so happy to be with them. I know, I thought it was nice.
Yeah.
They are very nice.
I want one of those in my house.
Let it was, I'm just unplugging it, the last time we heard, it was just because somebody was unplugging them.
Yeah.
That is not the case.
But thank you, uh, for that, uh, Natasha, great, 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 great report, um, uh, now we hear from Trent Court, Pam.
You're on mute, Pam. Can I say something while she's trying to get off mute?
Yes.
We had the, um, the visual library, too. Yeah, and, um, they came out and the residents wore the goggles and they was, uh, traveling all over the place. Um, that was, yeah, yes, yes, that.
You know, the Oculus, um, things that you go in, so they came out and do that with the, uh, residents at the towers, and so, yeah, they went to Ireland. Um, and they were just like swinging hands, looking around and everything.
We have pictures.
That's good, that's good.
Yeah.
Thank you for keeping them active.
They, uh, I think they asked, uh, where would they like to go, and they wanted to go to, uh, Disney World.
Best to go.
Yeah, and so, they're, they're having fun, like, we, we keep them busy over there.
Appreciate you not just directing but being fully engaged.
Yeah, I wa, I wanted to use it, uh, the Oculus too, but.
You ready, Pam?
So, and I do apologize about that.
Uh, no problem, floor is yours.
I have, um, a hundred and ten units, ninety are, are, um, occupied, twenty are vacant, and the occupancy rate is eighty-two. I had two move-ins and four move-outs, and one of those went to Carolina Avenue. On the tenant accounts receivable, I have charged twenty-three thousand forty dollars and thirty-nine cents. Received twenty-seven thousand eighty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. Unpaid is four thousand forty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents, and the tar rate is a hundred and eighteen percent. Pending terminations, uh, for non-payment, twenty-four, criminal zero, other violation zero. Work orders, I have two outstanding requests, and for the month, uh, February, I have received thirty-three, uh, requests, thirty-one was completed. Pending repair was two, zero pending parts, on the police report with seventeen calls, and fire report was zero.
Same question for you on the vacancies, how many of those units are ready, uh, to have folks moving?
Okay, so this month, you won't see, I had, um, four ready, I had two move-ins this month. I have one on the board for, um, re, waiting to turn in money. I have two on the board for security deposits, they waiting to get money, they trying to find resources.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then just to share, um, we have staff that are, um, trying to work on weekends, trying to get the units ready to rent, um, so, um, we, we are down by one, uh, maintenance, as I said, and, um, one, one of the things while we were out at, um, NC Works doing our job here, I spoke to, uh, one of the gentlemen there, and, um, they have a program where they can place, um, young adults at agencies, um, to learn skills or just to learn, um, office environment, maintenance type things, and some of the, um, students are attending the vault. And so, um, I'm looking to try to get, um, a young man placed, um, with Mr. Jones to show him, to help him, um, to work, um, in the towers on, um, repairs and just any other, um, thing that he could use him for. We're also trying to get, um, someone who is interested in the, um, office field to come in and act as a receptionist at the towers too, so. Um, I'm hoping that, uh, we can partner with NC Works and, um, allow them to place, um, individuals with us. Because we definitely need some help.
Have you checked with, um, New Bern High School?
They place students that can actually do work like that?
I think they do, they may have a program for that.
Okay.
The city is just, we started an internship program, so we're getting high schools, some high school students, we had one that was interested like in, in lab and doing something in the labs, we've got them out at our water department. So again, it's a good way to get people introduced to different things, I think you have to be sixteen. Yes, yeah, I mean, they don't, yeah, be understood.
If we need them.
Do you know the point of study?
I don't, but, um, if you contact, um, Sonia Hayes at our HR department, that's who set up the program, and I'm sure she'll be happy.
Okay.
Trent Court, Mr. Chairman, um, um, the units that are ready to be read, do we, is there a waiting list several? I mean, this is several meetings ago, maybe six months ago, the question was asked, and they said there was no waiting list, that, that had been exhausted, that there's really no waiting list of people trying to get in, because everywhere we go, the number one question we're asked is, there's no housing, no housing, the need for housing, yet we have all these.
You have a waiting list.
You do, okay, because I was told about, you know, this was prior to you coming out.
Oh, yeah, we, we have a waiting list.
So you, you do have people waiting to get out there, you, you just don't have the units ready for them.
Right, we just don't have the units ready.
Yeah, I think some of it, I think some of it also has to do with, and, and it took me a while to get this under my mind, is that, you know, i- if you're a single, um, you can't get a two-bedroom, so there is limitations about who can actually rent the units, even if there are available.
Right, you have to have the appropriate family size to go into a unit. And, and we need, again, um, the RFP is out there for unit terms, so if you know of contractors or any company that can, you know, do unit terms, repairs, paint, get our units ready, please have them, go to the website to look at the, um, RFP.
Are there any activities that we're planning, um, or have done or to report on for Trent Court? We do a lot, um, at the towers, um, is there anything that we have planned, um, for our residents at Trent Court, or is that, go ahead?
Our Ross resident, uh, service coordinator, uh, that's part of their, um, job duty, because they'll be assigned to that property only. Um, and then, uh, the activities that they'll do there, uh, is to get the resident engaged in the, um, resident council there, um, working with them on goals and doing events there, um, at that property as well. I mean, and we did, uh, we sent, um, notices out, uh, during Black History Month for, um, the Trent Court residents to send their pictures of their activities and we really did get a good response, uh, from that, so we're hoping that this person will be boots on the ground out there in that neighborhood and get those, uh, residents engaged.
And you said you got, um, an interview with somebody for that right now?
Yes, I have an interview scheduled for Thursday, but it's just, uh, one person.
We're gonna leave more of them to come, so you can have, you'll have choices, you know? But I'm glad you brought that up, because I was thinking about, man, but I, I can imagine how I will be feeling if they got something going on. If I don't understand that dynamic that we don't have a person spearheading us over here, no fault of, you know, I mean, the way the system is, um, don't want them to feel left out, yeah, and I'm quite sure you don't, but we need to have something that they can be galvanized and, uh, and, and encouraged, that's what that does, it, it put a fire in you when you, when you showing what you're showing out there. And that just, that just makes people feel good about them.
Right.
You know?
What are the demographics at Trent Court? Because I know, um, I guess it's just me and, and my opinion, but at the towers, um, it's the towers, you know, you have older, uh, elderly residents, but at Trent Court, what do we have? I know we have families, would you say?
Pam, do you hear that question? You're on mute. And we try to engage with the Trent Court residents through, uh, Facebook, and when we did the, um, Black History Parade, we had Trent Court residents out there with us for the parade.
I'm looking it up.
That's a good question though, because I want to know the target, what you, what would be good for them, you know? I'm quite sure there are various ranges, you know?
All over the board, I bet.
And I would say, and not to discourage that, but they're not used to this, they're not going to be used to it, so you're going to have to have somebody, like you said, boots on the ground and that can get the party started.
I'm sure when we went out for Halloween, um, and we were giving out candy, I, I had a lot of the residents come out to me and say, y'all right here giving out candy, I've never seen anything like this before. So we, we were out there, I just need to get well so I can get out and start walking, I just can't walk too far right now.
No, you're bringing fresh air to, 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 to them, to the people, to the community.
Well, something that hurt us a lot was when, when Florence came through in twenty eighteen, we lost Cheryl Reed. She has moved to, has she moved into Carolina Avenue, does anyone ask? She was our, uh, uh, at, at, she was, she was the resident, uh, spokesperson, and she was always active. And we had, uh, for the children, we had BB and T buying them swimsuits. The, uh, city was giving them a, a, a bus service, and the YMCA was giving them swimsuits.
Yeah, that's great.
And this was done all the time.
Wow.
And when we lost her, you know, that momentum died.
Something I was sharing with, uh, Mr. Norman earlier, that one thing, it's a concept we got to kind of adopt, is, uh, when we got somebody to go get a runner or whatnot, look at the succession, somebody else that can partner with them, that's, so when that person, whatever may happen, somebody's in the shoe, and it is, so you don't lose that. And sometimes we got to think that way for them, because a lot of time they don't process it like that, and, you know, everybody has somebody to help them, they may not know what you're looking at, setting up, but I think, you know, but anyway, just a thought, it just came to me.
Well, I, I used to say, when we were coming up with something to do, I would say, what Cheryl say? What's Ms. Blackman say?
Have you all had a chance to look at our website, like, really closely, I just want to share with you while we're waiting on Ms. Minor, so that you could take a look at it? So it has all of our board meetings are our latest news.
I saw it today, yeah.
And then we also have a calendar here that lists all the board meetings, all of our holidays, everything is here. Our March Board Meeting tab will be updated, but, um, the February is already there, and if you click on it, it'll go and it'll have, um, the information about, um, the Zoom link only, um, the meeting that we had, the time, and then it also has the Zoom video was uploaded, uh, once we get it done, um, the video is uploaded. You go back to the home, um, the March meetings, our today's meeting is there, but, um, it just has the information here in person, Zoom link, the Zoom, uh, meeting will be uploaded, um, once we complete this meeting.
Does that link have the agenda on it?
It, it does not, and we're not required to post our agenda, but it, it doesn't have it on there.
Meeting is a public body, you don't have to.
It's, it's on our, uh, agenda is right here, um, it just tells the date and time, we don't have to tell everything that we're doing, it has a date and time, um, listed is what we have up there, when we have the meeting, but as far as everything we're going to say and do, it's not, um.
For regular meetings, special public meetings.
Yeah, I'm, so for regular meetings, you don't have to post any of that?
No.
It's not really interesting as a public body, why would you?
Yeah, so it's up there, but. It's, it's, um, everything is right there, but, I mean, if it'll make you happy, I'll list it all out.
For me, as much as for the residents or anybody that wants to know what your meeting agenda is.
It was posted, now, if you want to see the full agenda, like, most people look at Facebook, people don't too much go to our website, but here it is.
It's there on your, okay, just as long as it's somewhere.
Oh, yeah, and then also I sent it to the city, the city's supposed to post it, I hope they are.
Uh, that I don't know. I don't know, but if you're on your Facebook, I mean, it's just someplace that it's in the public realm for.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's right there, if they want to see it, they can go right there, Facebook link is here.
Don't do Facebook.
Yeah, and I, and I don't either, but, uh, most people do.
Yeah.
And so also just here, our board commissioners, it's here, um, the information, how to attend is over here, tell them how to do it. Um, the Zoom link, if they have any questions, um, and then we have our calendar here, again, that has all of our meetings. Then we have a news tab, um, here, it's hiding back here, and it has everything listed here, everything that we post. Even, um, when we have holidays, if you click on that, it'll tell you about Martin Luther King Day. Any day that's coming up, you can find information, um, about it on our calendar. The other great thing we have is forms, all of our forms are here, which is easy for the residents to tell us they have a rent change. Uh, we have them all for Trent Court and, um, New Bern Towers, so if someone started a job, they can click right here where it says, uh, employment started, notify the housing authority, they can fill it all out and just hit submit.
That's good.
If they lost their job, they can fill out the same thing and just hit submit, and it goes straight to, um, Ms. Minor, so she'll have it.
So. So question, uh, because that, that, this is all awesome, though, the, does, do the residents have knowledge that, that's, they can go there and get all of this?
Yes.
Good, good, good.
And then, um, like, if they want to move out, which I hope they don't, they can do attend the vacate and, um, fill it out here, so unless they want to move out.
Very user-friendly.
Yeah, and also translate, so if you want it in Spanish, you can just hit translate, or if you want it in German, you can hit translate if you want it in.
It's easy enough for this old man to look at it on his telephone.
Yes, and it, and it moves, it, it's different on your computer than it is on your telephone, so it just go automatically formulates to your phone.
That's good, you're doing great, Ms. Askew, you're doing great.
And we also have, oh, and then, really good to share, to share, let's see. So we have all of our properties on here.
Got a map?
Yes. A map, and, um, so if you go to residents, here is a whole section on, uh, preparing for disasters. Um, and all these links to all the websites here, uh, flood safety is here. Um, and then you can go to this site and tell you what to do to prepare for a flood. It's hiding up here, and we have hurricane preparedness, everything to do to get ready for a hurricane is here. What a tornado, um, watch is, our hurricane watch, what all this stuff means, how to get ready. So listed through here, so it's like a lot of information, um, how to prepare to evacuate, and what things to get ready to have, how to pack your car, what emergency items you need in your car. So it's a lot of, um, information on this site.
Where are the RFPs?
Um, the RFPs are here.
Okay.
And it's all user-friendly, so if there's someone that is, um, disabled, they can, um, they can, the reader, for someone that's blind, the reader can, um, read, uh, everything that's on the site. Down here, and all of the instructions for submitting, everything is here.
Got the forms.
That's great.
You've got a lot of forms.
I know we do, don't we?
I mean, these pages are formed. I'm sorry.
So did, uh, Pam, somebody waving some information from Pam, did we, demographics, will we?
You ready?
Yeah, you ready? Okay, Commissioner, ready, what, what information would you like to know?
Just the demographics, I'm curious now, because we have a language translation on the website, so do we have any residents that would speak other languages other than English?
No.
Okay.
Just in case.
I can tell you that we have eight-point-seventy-nine percent couples, we have eight couples, eighty-three single people. We have seventy-eight percent women, twenty-one, twenty-one-point-nine-eight percent males. We have ninety-five kids, children, ages between one and eighteen. See, what else, I can tell you we have hundred percent non-Hispanic, we got ninety-one percent black, seven-point-sixty-nine percent white, and one-point-one other. You want to know anything about primary income?
No, ma'am, that is, you've given me all that information.
You're doing great with all that information, good job.
Do you have the ages of the leaseholders?
Let me see.
They're the ones who signed the lease.
Okay, I have a number of male head, head of household is twenty. We have seventy-one households that are female, and twenty that's male. So, we do have some male households, head of households.
I was just wondering, who's the oldest and who's the youngest?
I cannot tell you that with this.
That's fine.
She moved to Carolina Avenue, and she was like ninety-three.
So, you got some young, you know, I mean, yeah, it's all over the place, it would be.
So, it sounds like you have mostly female head of household. I thank you so much.
Great job, Pam, thanks for, thanks for that, yeah, thanks for taking the time to follow all of that.
Thank you.
I have a question for, from Ms. Minor.
Yes.
Ms. Minor? Can you look back at your report under tenant accounts receivable, and please correct me if I am wrong, but we had charged less than we received, but the unpaid amount would be the difference if those numbers were reversed?
Yeah, I was going to ask the same question, but I was going to do it with Ms. Askey, I'm wondering if the form is not filled out, it's a little askew. What, what Commissioner Powell was talking about, if you look at the tenant accounts receivables, charge was twenty-three thousand and forty, received twenty-seven oh eighty-two, unpaid was four thousand forty-two. Well, if you add four thousand forty-two to twenty-three oh four zero, you get twenty-seven oh eighty-two. That.
Some of that money, she may have gotten from, like, overpayment, and that could have been.
Well, it just, it, it, it just is, it just doesn't, you know, it did.
Since we're getting money that's overpaid to us from previous balances, and so, for some months, that might be all that she had that was unpaid, and we just got more because of overdue, so I guess we can kind of, we can fix that to make.
Sort of reflect them properly.
Yeah, I, I just think it's not been filled out correctly, that's all, I wasn't going to make the issue out of it.
Question going forward.
Yeah, I caught that and had made a note to talk with Tiffany about it.
I thought we had that before, and, yeah.
Well, I don't think it worked out quite the way this has worked out, where you add unpaid to the charge.
That's for the dollar here.
Yeah, and I'm going, that's screwy, and I'm not saying screwy, but it just, it doesn't seem like it's correct. Because I was looking at the T A R rate, and I was going, now, how as a businessman would I, would I compute the T A R rate? And it just wasn't working out, I mean, the T A R rate worked out, but the, it just, you know, it just didn't make sense to me, that's all. Ms. Powell and I will get our hands on that beast.
That's it, no resolutions today, but we go, I guess they have acted the ones that we took care of, that we signed, I signed one a couple of weeks ago, and so, that's good with that. So, we come to the end of the agendas, any comments, questions at this point in time? None, are there motions that we can turn to meeting?
I shall move.
I have seconds.
I have a second.
There we go.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you all for your time, for giving up your time, I just want you to know, we appreciate what you're doing, thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you.